How are you, young man?
Good, John. How are you?
I don't know either. It's been a crazy, crazy day today. Just working my little fannies off. Alrighty. It's December ninth, twenty twenty-five. It's three o'clock in the afternoon. We are having a meeting for the Board of County Commission for Uinta County, Utah, and this will be held in the commission chambers at Vernal. Our first thing will be a prayer by Deanna Nyberg and a pledge by Karen England.
Good Father in heaven, we are so grateful to be gathered here today to plan and make decisions for Uinta County. We're grateful for the area in which we live, and we ask thee to bless us as we discuss the county that that will be with us to do so in a manner that is pleasing unto thee. Please be with the commissioners to have the best interests of the county in mind. And we ask thee to bless much over those who are serving in the armed forces and in the local law enforcement, protect them, and we ask thee same in Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen.
There we are.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you very much. Our first order of business is approval of the minutes for December second, two thousand twenty-five.
I would make a motion that we approve those minutes.
Any comments, concerns, thoughts? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is Mr. Wilkins with the approval of warrants.
Commissioners, I have warrants from December fourth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of four hundred five thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars and sixteen cents. Nothing bigger. Anything on this? Check, run.
Anything else on the?
Nope.
Okay, call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants as presented.
Call for a vote if there's no concern.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any tax matters today? Yeah, you filled this up last week, didn't y'all? Okay, we have no tax matters today. We'll move along to awarding an IFB road department boom mower with attachments. Trina?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's Trina Gardner with the Purchasing and Grants Department. I just want to start out though-
Is that microphone on?
I don't know, how do I?
Oh, okay.
Happy birthday, Mr. Commissioner John Larson. I just want to make sure to say happy birthday to you, but anyways, we've been got you, man. We've been coordinating with the road department to procure a boom mower with attachments to support the maintenance of the canal roads and roads and associated infrastructure. So we set out an invitation for bid, and from that invitation from bid, we only got one responsive bid, and it was from a At-Max Equipment Company. After a full review, the bid was confirmed to meet all the requirements outlined in our IFB. And some of the attachments, I'm really, this is a really cool machine, some of the attachments that came with that is a thirty-foot boom arm, rotary cutting deck mulching attachment, a saw blade attachment, grapple attachment, front hydraulic lift arm, and a wood chipper. The total bid amount is three hundred eighty-five thousand nine hundred and nine dollars and fifty-four cents. At this time, we are requesting approval to award the purchase of the boom mower and its attachments to At-Max Equipment Company.
Does that include how, for it to get here?
Yes, it will be shipped here.
Okay. Yeah. I just hadn't-
Well, why can't go down there cheaper than that and get it? Probably gone a couple of weeks, my sister lives down there. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the award of the boom mower with attachments as presented. And the price of that is three hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and nine dollars fifty-four cents.
Questions, comments, or concerns? Call for a vote.
This is partly just something to add, is that this piece of equipment will be used mainly on our flood channels that we have to now to take care of and to maintain. And we feel like this is probably the most cost-effective machine to do that. And it can also be used with roads and for the road department as well.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next will be Uinta County Historic Preservation and Museum Advisory Board, twenty twenty-five annual review by Museum. I don't know, you're a jack of all trades. Museum director, librarian, the head of all that stuff. Karen England.
Thank you. And I think to like shorten it, because it's library, archives, and museum, just call me like the Lamb Director.
Wow, you don't have any icons on your desktop. That's amazing.
Um, I don't understand why this is not showing up on the screen.
Jump into action there, Matt. See if you can help her out.
Is it a HDMI? Because there's another HDMI cable there. Maybe it's a different one that you have to-
No, it's- I was like, why? With my screen.
Seven there.
Okay. Understand why. Like, I'm in a second screen, but I don't know.
Maybe open up what you had there. You have a presentation?
I do have a presentation. I thought I had a presentation, but maybe I don't. It's going to a separate screen, which is weird. Okay, well, I don't have a presentation. Sorry. Okay. The Uinta County Historic Preservation Board Museum Historic Preservation and Museum Advisory Board, twenty twenty-five annual report. Twenty twenty-five was a transformative year for the Historic Preservation and Museum Advisory Board. The board successfully secured and initiated the St. Paul's Episcopal Church Restoration Project through a twenty thousand CLG grant, rebranded the Uinta County Heritage Museum to the Museum of Uinta County, strengthened board governance through bylaw amendments, and laid the groundwork for expanded preservation activities for twenty twenty-six and beyond. The board officers, the chair is Leanne Denzer, the vice chair is Amber Kosky. The secretary from January to July was Jamie Percival, and Alicia Luke was July through current. Active board members are Erin Averitt, Stephanie Tuppets, and Sonya Noren. We have two vacant spots, which I hope to be filled soon. Governance achievements, adopted comprehensive board bylaws, November twenty-four and amended in July of twenty twenty-five, established bi-monthly meetings scheduled for twenty twenty-six. They will be the first Mondays at four thirty PM. Transitioned museum location to the museum of the meeting location to the Museum of Uinta County as the anchor location, and streamlined minute-taking process with dedicated staff support. The major accomplishments, the St. Paul's Episcopal Church. The board signature achievement for twenty twenty-five was securing and launching the restoration of the restoration project. One of, and it is one of the oldest religious structures in the Uinta Basin, which was built in nineteen oh one. The grant funding, the board received a twenty thousand CLG grant, and the projected value is forty thousand with the required twenty thousand in-kind match. The county commission approved the grant October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. The project's scope, structural stabilization and mortar repairs for church and adjacent lodging building, window restoration using historic preservation best practices, foundation repointing at stone masonry walls, community education through volunteer training workshops. Community partnerships have been established. An established planning community led by Vice Chair Amber Kosky, partnered with UB Tech and USU Vernal for student involvement in masonry trades, coordinated with Vernal City Planning Department for permit fee waivers, developed communication plan with County Public Affairs, created public engagement initiatives, including Name the Crack campaign, new news releases issued October twenty-ninth, twenty of twenty-five, generating positive community response. The timeline, February twenty twenty-five, the grant application was submitted, August, grant awarded and kickoff meeting held, October through November, planning and coordination phase, spring of twenty-six, implementation begins, and September twenty-six, project completion with open house celebration. The museum rebranding, the board approved a comprehensive rebranding of the museum to better reflect the mission and increase community engagement. The rationale was to reduce confusion with Western Heritage Museum modernized identity appeal to broader audiences and give the museum a more forward look to the community. We've had positive responses through Facebook polls and just general community members engaging with the museum, more online and in the building. The commission approved the name change August of twenty twenty-five. The new logo and website domain have been secured, and we are seeing good traction with online presence. The museum also adopted the DMCA copyright and takedown policy notices, adopted patron content submission, and established safe harbor legal protection for museum digital content. The museum and the board have received grant training. They have been, the museum curator, joined the museum association board, and all museum and archive staff were able to attend the museum conference in Canab this year. Collection management for the museum operations. We are continuing to assess our collection and de-assess those items that are not necessary for the museum. We've streamlined collection by removing duplicate items and coordinated return of load items or conversion to formal donations. Programming and exhibits. The museum is actively working on their First Lady Doll collection for the fiftieth anniversary. We have supported the Buffalo Soldiers Heritage Trail signage products with SHIPO, and museum visitation has increased through enhanced programming and social media outreach. And in twenty twenty-six, the museum is planning the voices and votes that will work in conjunction with the two-hundred-and-fiftieth signing of the Declaration of Independence. Historic preservation activities, SHIPO-funded survey of Vernal Main Street. The results are expected early of the coming year. Maintained a watch list for at-risk historic properties and consulted on development requests affecting historic properties. Vernal City has applied for the certified local government status. And we are awaiting National Park Service approval and coordinated with potential Vernal City Historic Preservation Board establishment. The financial summary, the grant review. Grant revenue, the CLG grant was awarded at twenty thousand dollars. The total project value is forty with in-kind match. Federal funding impacts, the twenty-five thousand grant application placed on hold due to federal budget cuts, museum on Main Street, Smithsonian grant was five thou, which we were awarded at five thousand for the semi-sequestinial celebration. Board, the board is advocating for congressional representatives regarding historic preservation and funding. Challenges addressed in twenty twenty-five, our board vacancies. Two seats remain vacant. We are hoping to have those filled shortly. The federal funding uncertainty and need for increased voluntary and community engagement, and looking ahead for twenty twenty-six. The officer election schedule, the St. Paul's Restoration Implementation, expanded subcommittee structure for grant coordination and strategic planning, research, future CLG grant opportunities, and potential fifty-year facility plan for new museum and archive building, and with the increased bi-monthly meeting schedule for enhanced oversight. The meeting record, the board held seven meetings for last year, and in conclusion, the Historic Preservation and Museum Advisory Board demonstrated significant progress in twenty twenty-five, successfully launching the county's first major historic preservation grant project while strengthening museum operations and board governance. The St. Paul's Episcopal Church Restoration Project positions Uinta County as a leader in historic preservation within the state CLG grant program and serves as a model for future preservation initiatives. That was our year. Do you have any questions?
What took you so long?
What's that?
What took you so long?
I'm sorry, it was a little more than five minutes.
What is SHIPO?
Thank you.
What is SHIPO?
Um, it state historic, thank you. Thank you.
Say it again.
State Historic Preservation Office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I knew what it was, but the people out in the world don't. So, okay. It's time for public comment. Do we have anybody who would like to make a public comment?
I, I do not sing.
I could hit you from here. Yes, ma'am.
Karen.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear John. Happy birthday to you.
I could glare glass past you. We will have an opening very shortly as soon as I get off this bench. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make some comments.
Okay, come up here.
To this microphone right there.
Yeah. And at this time, I'll open up the floor for public comment. Please keep your remarks to three minutes so that everyone has a chance to speak. Remember, this is a time for comment and not for debate. To make this a productive and respectful space, keep things civil, avoid interruptions, be mindful of the time limits. Making a public comment, please step to the microphone. State your name for the record, and if she gives you a really weird look, she needs you to spell your name. She can't spell my name half the time, so you're alright. She's trained, finally. Okay, please be courteous to those in attendance and wait for the microphone to be available before making a comment. County may not respond to comments or answering questions. However, we value your input and will take comments into consideration. Please be aware, the county may not have the power to act on some. A total fifteen minutes will be allocated for public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to make the comments. Again, we truly value hearing from our community, and with, while this portion of the meeting is limited, we welcome more in-depth conversation. If you'd like to continue the discussion, please feel free to stay after the meeting. We'll be glad to schedule a time to meet with you and talk further. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I have some concerns about the Golden Age Center.
Do you mind stating your name?
Need your name.
Oh, I need your, oh, my name. My name is Sharon Schaefer. It's S-H-A-E-F-F-E-R. And Sharon is spelled with an E-N. So I am a concerned senior citizen, and in the past few years, I've seen some decline in the services at the Golden Age Center. This, there is no longer an RN at the center that is needed to manage the cases for the Medicaid-funded programs. Therefore, that are no cost to the county, they are free, but there's no one to manage those cases because there is no longer an RN there. And the only place that they can be managed now at this time is Orem and Price that I know of. And the food has, has went downhill. It's poor quality and with smaller amounts and portions, and some of these, these senior citizens rely on this for, for their food and and don't have adequate places, other, other places to get these meals. So that's important. They're also no longer very much of a homemade. It's, it's frozen and heated up. Also, there's the, there's not, no longer adequate staff to implement the programs for the seniors that they've had in the past. I just mentioned the RN nurse. Right now, they're without a director. Drivers to take the food out to those who are homebound. And it, and one of the problems that I see as an observer is that it is very stressful for the staff that's trying to do their work, but have been put other responsibilities on them because of the limited staff that there is. I have a question about the mineral lease money that, and I just was wondering if the mineral lease money is up or down for because I, that's part of the funding for, and is it up or down? Could you tell me that?
It's down, Sharon.
Well, but the mineral lease for the health, healthcare district is not down. It has been maintained, in fact, it was increased by two hundred thousand last year. Well, this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
For this year. It was increased, but that includes the Care Center and the Golden Age Center.
Okay, and with that, that in mind, at this point, the Care Center Director or
Director.
Yeah, is also over the Golden Age Center. And there seems to be a big problem there because our funding has, is limited because of, of, that we don't have adequate amount of money to pay for staff such as an RN and other staff to hold down positions to make it to where there's enough people in the, in the facility. It's a beautiful facility. It's a wonderful place, and there's a lot of people who get a lot of enjoyment and help from that facility. But if we don't have the adequate staff, if we're not able to pay adequate wages to have people even apply for it, then it, it causes a big problem. And I just see this as an outsider, or, well, not an outsider, because I go to the center, but what case in point, we as seniors and need not only the physical of exercise and, and being able to be fed, you know, having food and, and that kind of thing. We also need the social. And one of our program directors, she has some really good programs, but she's called out in the past while she's been called out so many times to be able to go and be a driver to, to take food or do something, or do another, address another problem that we've had to cancel on numerous occasions. Are some of our activities that we, we look forward to, that we want to have to have at our disposal. We, we have a really good time there. There's a social, sociality. We get exercise. We get to be creative in quilting. We, she's also has a book club that's going, but that has to be, sometimes be canceled. She also has a, a program of showing movies. And for the next couple of weeks, those things are going to be canceled because of other priorities that have happened because of of someone being let go. And so there's a lot of people that are having to take up the slack, so to speak. Anyway, so I was just wondering about this, the money. Another program that has been canceled, and this has to do with another, another program, but it's the Tai Chi, and it's canceled because of lack of funding for that. And so we would really like, I would really like to see this, this address so that we can get back to and utilize that facility in, in the way it's meant to be used. Also, I just wanted to, I really wonder about there being a conflict of interest between the between the two, two facilities, the Care Center being over the Golden Age Center. Because the Care Center's goal is to help people who can no longer be on their own and need to stay in a facility, where the Golden Age Center is one that is one that, the goal is to keep we seniors in our homes, that we have the programs that will help us to, to live a better life in our homes with services provided. I believe some of that is headed under, let me see. It's headed under the Older American Act, which is, has to do with the meals that are being provided have as well.
Sharon, let me answer some of your questions because you're way out of time. But let me call, draw your attention to a few things. On the food, are you talking about in the facility or home delivery?
Both, the same.
No, it's not the same. Because what we have found out is the person that was starting the trucks to heat them up in the morning wasn't turning the thermostat down, and the person who was driving it didn't turn the thermostat down. So when we're delivering home delivery meals, they're cooking the whole time, and they were raunchy. I think that's been fixed. We had that discussion, not guaranteeing it.
Okay.
As far as the portions and things like that, I really hate to say this, but I'm gonna have to. There's a new law out on what they can and can't do. You have to have a registered dietitian on staff. Their dietitian is actually on staff, but she's a contract out of Salt Lake. And they're doing exactly what she tells them they have to do. Now, you need to understand that, if you remember, there's salt pepper shakers over there when you go to lunch, because the meals are made very, very little or no sodium involved, because we've got too many patients that can't have salt. You know, it really messes with them. So it's there for you to use if you need it, but you don't get caught by your doctor using it, or he's liable to have some words for you. As far as not having a director, you have an acting director there. She has many hats to wear, but she is your acting director. She Has Many Hats To Wear, But She Is Your Acting Director.
She's Been Fired.
No.
No, The One At The Care Center Is Over Both.
No, The Accountant, No, The, The, Who Does Your Payroll Is Now Your Acting Director There. She Didn't Get Fired. She Stepped Right Up There And She's Trying To Get The Ropes All Straightened Out Because There Was A Mess When She Took Over, Which Is Why The Last One Was Terminated.
Okay.
By Her Own Admission, She Said It's More Than She Could Handle. So It Was A, I Think, A Very Mutual.
The Timing Of It Was Really Hard Because.
And I Agree With That, 100%. You Should Have Been On The Board. We Had A Hard Time With That Decision Because Of The Time, But There Was A Lot Of Other Circumstances That Had Not Been Met, That We Were Concerned About The Safety And The Welfare Of Our Elderly People. I Shouldn't Say Our, My Age Old People.
From What We Saw As,
Yeah.
People That Are In There, We Saw A Lot Of Things That She Did Accomplish It As Well. Though Things That Had Been.
That Sidney Missed.
Been Put Off For Quite Some Time. And So We Only Saw.
You Only Saw Parts Of It.
Accomplishing.
Yeah, Yeah, We Saw A Lot Of Other Things That Were Different. And So That's, We've Got An Advertisement Out. We Raised The Wages For A Director Over There, Trying To Get Somebody That Was Experienced In It, Knew How To Do It, And Most Importantly Is Loved Us Old Folks. Because That's What It Takes, Is Somebody Who Really Enjoys The People.
I Agree, I Agree, Yeah. We're All Going To Get There Someday. And Yeah.
Some Of Us Sooner Than Others. Yeah, Okay. As Far As The Driver Shortage, I Am Not Aware Of That, But I Will Check Into It And See.
And I Think It May, I Think They Have In The Last Couple Of Three Weeks Have Gotten.
Somebody Else Drive?
Some Part-Time.
Okay.
But We're Still Seeing It With Our Activities Director. We're Still Seeing Her Because She's Well-versed. She's Done This For Many Years. And So She's The First To, Hey, Will You Drive? And Then That Makes It To Where, Well, I'm An Avid Ball Drummer And I, And That Gets Pushed To The Wayside If She's Not Able To Do It. Sometimes Her Daughter Does, But She's Not On The Payroll.
Yeah.
So.
That's A Hard One.
Yes.
Okay, As Far As One Other Thing, Have You Talked To Allison About These Issues?
No, No, I Don't Know Her. I Just, I Just, I've Just Seen That There Is These Problems And.
I Would Like To Say Contact Her, But If You're Concerned About It, I Will Be Glad To Pass This On. I Do Sit On The Board.
Well, And I, Yeah, And I Understand That Her, She Is Having Some Other Issues And As Unavailable Right Now.
Right, Yeah. She Has Some, Well, Yeah, She Has A Big Baby To Take Care Of Right Now.
Yeah, Yeah. And So, Yeah, And I Appreciate.
The Doctors Made Him A Baby For A While.
Yeah, And I Appreciate Your Listening To My Concerns. I'll Probably Be Back.
Well.
Because I Really Care About Our Seniors. I Really Care About What's Happening There Because I've Been Involved, Not In Every Aspect, But This For The Meals For This Month, We Have Always Had A Christmas Dinner.
Correct.
And There Is No Christmas Dinner. We Did Have A Nice Thanksgiving One, But There Is No Christmas Dinner This, For This, And I Just Like, Some Of The, Some Of The Seniors, That's All They Have For A Celebration.
Well, We Will Find Out What's Going On With That Because I Have Not Heard That Yet. So I Appreciate You Calling It My Attention.
Yeah, I Forgot To Bring The Menu. I Was Going To Bring It And Now You Forgot.
We See It. We Look At It Every Week. It's In The Paper.
Okay.
You Know, And If It's Not Then We Go Online And Look At It. We Actually Slip Up There Every Once In A While On The QOT And They Don't Know Where Come And Walk In And We Eat Lunch. Pay For It, Eat Lunch. I've Pulled One Meal Off Of The Meals On Wheels So Far, And It Was Really Bad.
Yeah.
And They Got That Reminded, I Understand. I Haven't Pulled One Off Recently. I'll Try To Catch One Tomorrow When He Comes By. Because They Always, They Got One Extra On There. I Don't Tell Them I'm Going To Do It Because I Don't Want To Put An Extra Different Meal On There. I Want What Everybody Else Gets. And See How, So I Can See How It Is. Because I Agree With You. It's Very, Very Important.
It Really Is.
You Know, Nutrition's Really Great. Anything Else? Come To My Office And We'll Be More And Glad To Discuss It With You.
Okay.
Okay, Please, Anytime.
Okay.
May I Just Make Some Clarifications? What I Was Trying To Say Was There Is A Director Over The Health District. That Is Allison Hatch. She Would Be Over, I Don't Know What, I Would Call It The Manager Of The Golden Age Center. So Just So You Don't Get Confused.
Director.
There Is A Director That Is Over The Health District, Which Includes The Golden Age And The, That's What I Was Trying To Say Earlier. And As Far As The Meals, I Was Just Trying To Say The Same Meal That Served Is The Meal That Goes Out In The Meals On Wheels Is What I Was Just Trying To Clarify There.
Yeah. I Do Believe That They Get A Smaller Portion, But I Can Kind Of Understand That In That, To Package It Up And That Kind Of Thing, But.
And You Are More Than Welcome To Get With Commissioner Larson Because He Is On That Board, But You Can Also Go Do This To The Board If You Would Like. Go Talk To The Health District Board. Because They're The Ones That Actually Are Over All Of That. We Can't Control It. Only The Person That Sits On The Board Has A Voice From The Commission.
So When Did They Meet?
See Me In My Office. I'll Tell You The Next One.
Okay, Thank You.
Because I Just Don't Know Off The Top Of My Head.
Yes, Thank You So Much.
It's Going To Cost You Both Though. I Need Your Signatures On The Way Out Please.
They Did It Already.
Oh, Did You Already Sign In On Me?
Yeah.
Okay, Well, I Didn't See You. You Were Sneaky.
Yeah, Do You Need My Signature Or She Just Wrote Her Name Down?
No, That's Fine. No, That's Fine. As Long As We Know Who's Here. You Can't Do That To Me. I'm Old And Decrep And Can't See That Far Anymore According To These People Out Here That Sing Happy Birthday. If There's Nothing Else, I Have A Commissioner Has Something Else To Say. We Are Adjourned. Thank You.